All right, calling our meeting to order. So if you will all join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good morning. Before we get started with communication from parents, staff, and others, I'm just going to confirm the other three board members are dialed in remotely. So I want to make sure that they're on. So Mike, are you there?
Yes.
Dr. Miller? Dr. Miller, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, thank you. And Brittany?
Yep.
Perfect. All right, so all board members are present. So I will begin with reading our note for guidelines on communication from parents, staff, and residents. The Kennewick School Board, District Board of Directors, appreciates hearing from the community. At regular board business meetings, the Board of Directors sets aside 30 minutes for communication from parents, staff, and district residents. This time is reserved during the working meeting for the Board to listen to comments, input, and information. The Board does not respond to comments provided as it's the goal to listen and learn. Please know that the Board's silence is neutral. It's neither a signal of agreement nor disagreement with the speaker's remarks. As appropriate, the Board will ask the superintendent and staff to look into any issues raised. Please note, it is important for all community members to feel welcome and safe during the Board's meeting. The Board does not take public comment on issues related to personnel or individually named staff members at board meetings. However, you can email the Board with any such comments. Finally, please remember that your words have impact and you, not the school, are responsible for your words. We caution all speakers that it's possible that your statements could violate the rights of others under various laws, including laws protecting privacy and prohibiting defamation. If you're unsure of your legal effects of your remarks, please seek independent legal advice. Guidelines for addressing the Board. Please provide your info on the sign-in sheet, which I have. The Board President will call your name. Please come to the podium and at the front of the room. You'll have two minutes to address the Board. There will be a stoplight on the screen that will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when your time is ended. All right, so we will proceed with our agenda for communication from parents, staff, and residents. I will call you to the podium, and I apologize if I mispronounce your name in doing so, so bear with me. So our first speaker is Dottie Stevens.
Good morning. I'm Dottie Stevens, Kennewick resident and Kennewick School District partner. Enter to learn and go forth to serve classes 71. That was the motto of my college. And that's what I did, became a public educator. I'm speaking in opposition to the opposition to ES Bill 5462 and ES HB 2331. My question, as I've read it, is, I have a question for the Board. Who doesn't get served? Who are the activists that were mentioned, parents or students? In 1986, the Kennewick School District was sued over Title IX inequity for female students in sports offered and male students in sports offered. Football was unmatched for students who served virtually everyone in the district. Gymnastics was cut at Kamikin, a female option. The female one who was cut happened to have a judge for her grandfather. As one of my first assignments as a pre-king coordinator, this was my focus, meeting with the state coordinator monthly and local family, staff, and community members to develop operational state guidelines that follow the state laws. The result was equity with basketball, girls and boys, and more interest in basketball. Kennewick High Girls went on to win a 4A championship in 2000, and Kamikin continued with strength in girls' basketball. This year, Kennewick High Girls are in 3A finals, Kamikin High School Girls are in 4A finals. Other sports were added, soccer for girls and boys, diving, swimming, and girls' sports. My point is, requests for service will change, and being more inclusive for some means more inclusivity for all. The direction came from the state, as it does now. And we met the challenge, and our students were served, and they proud. Thank you.
Thank you, Dottie. Next, we have Julie O'Brien.
Hi, good morning. I spent the majority of my 30-plus years in education, teaching for the Kennewick School District, a position that I valued. In fact, I was always very proud to share that I worked for this district. Today, I come here saddened with what is being proposed. As a school board, it is your job to ensure the success of the students who attend our schools. The success cannot happen without students feeling safe, respected, and valued. All students, including those who identify as LGBTQ+. In my classroom, that was always the first goal for my students, to feel safe, respected, and valued. I shared with my students that each child had a gift, and we could all learn from one another. When any of that is missing, learning does not take place. I read a recent quote that supports this from the Washington Education Association President Larry Delaney that states, "Students learn best when they see cultures and experience reflected in the curriculum, and all students benefit from a diversity of perspectives. This will enrich student learning and success." Adopting an inclusive curriculum should not be a problem. Our district already has very specific policies and protocols for adopting curriculum or screening curriculum, and the proposed resolution is not needed to find the appropriate curriculum to fit our district. These policies include educators, administrators, and community members working together. What would our world look like if we hadn't embraced the work of people like Sir Francis Bacon, Florence Nightingale, George Washington Harbor, Sally Ride, and Leonardo da Vinci, all identified as LGBTQ+? Those famous historic contributors were humans, and that is how our students should be treated, as humans. Whether a child is white, of color, different religion, gender, or pronouns, they have a right to an equal and inclusive education, and you, right here, have that opportunity to make that happen to them, for them, without judgment or limitations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Julie. Next up is Jan Fraley.
Good morning. Both ES HB 2331 and ES B 5462 refer to equity and inclusion for all students. KSD policy 2311 states, "All instructional materials must be eliminated that contain bias pertaining to sex, race, religions, color, sexual orientation, mental or physical disability, et cetera." And bullying policy 3207 is also outlawed by the district. The truth is, these marginalized groups are often bullied, and the hope of this bill is to increase understanding, knowledge, and acceptance. But let's get real about the reason for this resolution. ES B 5462, brief summary of the engrossed bill states, "Requires OSPN consultation with the Washington State LGBTQ Commission to review and update relevant state learning standards at all grade levels to include the histories, contributions, and perspectives of the LGBT people." This is cryptically mentioned in the resolution in the sixth whereas, "The Kennewick School Board of Directors does not believe curriculum should be consulted on by activist state commissions pushing sexual agendas and policies and subverting the vote of the local community." My knowledge, the community's never voted on this. Finally, "The hasty and sneaky time for this board meeting that excludes the attendance of students, teachers, and working parents is quite honestly shameful." These important issues should be scheduled for a regular board meeting where the community is encouraged and welcome to attend and share their views.
Thank you, Jan. Okay, next up is Diane Sundvik.
So first before I talk, I want to make sure that people online are hearing this because, or the mic is. So I think you have problems with online and people hearing, so.
Did you want to, like, raise the mic a little bit?
Well, I think that our media people put it here, or did somebody do that?
That's our mic. Yeah, that one.
Because I know it was hard when I was there. So, thank you. So 41 years as a speech-language pathologist, working with students with all kinds of disabilities, 29 years in Kennewick School District. I'm here today to talk to you about engrossed Senate Bill 5462, which establishes inclusive curriculum. I want to know if members of the Board know the federally protected categories, and Jan did mention some of them. I want to give them to you so that you know them. Race, ethnicity, national origin, citizenship status, color, religion, including dress and grooming practices, sex, gender, pregnancy, breastfeeding, childbirth, medical condition, gender identity, gender expression, gender reassignment, sexual orientation, marital status, HIV/AIDS status, age, disability, physical, or mental and military veteran status. So, I have two questions for the Board. One, does the Board seek to keep students from learning about military service members, marriage, childbirth, respecting their elders and people with disabilities? Or is your concern only about race, sexual orientation, and gender expression? If so, the Board should know that they, as has been mentioned, may be opening up the district to expensive discrimination lawsuits. My second question is very simple. What are you afraid of?
Thank you, Diane. Next up is Allison Dabbler.
Good morning. It is 100% clear what you are signaling with this resolution, based on last term's attempts by people on this Board to ban a book on race and to have pride flags removed from classrooms. We all know the agenda of the Washington Policy Center and groups like Moms for Liberty, for which you are taking your marching orders. Attempting to silence the voices of people of color and actively target a marginalized group that has six times more likely to be on the receiving end of bullying and violence and has four times the risk for child suicide is the worst kind of discrimination. The whole spirit of public school systems is that all children from communities across the country should come together, not only to learn their ABCs, but to also learn to work together with a mutual respect for one another and a shared acknowledgement and celebration of our differences to fix society's real problems. Together, as one nation, in whose individual rights and freedoms should be a settled afterthought by now. Attempting to whitewash history and to attempt to erase the existence, contributions, and experiences of these marginalized communities is fascism. Fascism has always been on the wrong side of history, and while you may feel that this small little community is your whole world, the rest of the country is a whole, and certainly the world is in direct opposition to your priorities of censorship and oppression and the kind of otherism that leads to violence. Do you think that this is what your community supports? Just as the world won the war against Nazifascism in 1940s and America won the war against the Confederacy in the 1860s, your far-right movement that only further divides this country is a terrible example to our children, and it is also losing, observed by elections all over the country. Conducting this meeting in the underhanded way that you have is not only against the transparency that you all like to talk about, but it is in bad faith to the people that you were elected to serve. Ensuring the least amount of possible feedback by holding the special session on a Tuesday morning where most community members and members surely not be able to attend and give their feedback is not only in bad faith, but it's quite frankly the very height of cowardice. You may have the majority of the vote on this Board today, but make no mistake, you are on the wrong side of the history. And I'm not sure how you convinced yourselves that prioritizing the oppression of people of color in the LGBT community is in any way admirable or honorable leadership. I will leave you with Supreme Court Justice William Brennan, who wrote, "If there is a bedrock principle underlying the First Amendment, it is that the government may not prohibit the expression of an idea simply based on part of a society that find that idea itself offensive or disagreeable." Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Next up is Chuck Henninger.
Thank you. I'm Chuck Henninger. I'm a lifelong Kennewick resident, and I'm just finding that it's very unfortunate that we've entered this regime of partisan politics. It's not escaped my attention that these bills in the House are going through on straight party-line votes, and I would urge the Kennewick School Board to remove yourself from this partisan politics. I would suggest that you don't even take up this resolution. But if you do take it up, I urge you to vote it down. But it sends the wrong signal that you are engaging in partisan politics for what should be a nonpartisan elected office. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Next up is Amy Goadly.
Good morning. My name is Amy Goadly, and I am a community stakeholder and parent of three KSD grads. November of 2023, before attending the WASDA meeting, two board members attended a training conducted by the Washington Policy Center. Now, the Washington Policy Center is known to be a right-wing organization who has close ties to the Koch Network and dark money. After reviewing these members' PDC filings, it came to my attention that these two elected board members did not report the gifts of hotel, meals, and training to the PDC as required by law. Aside from illegally not reporting gifts, it just looks bad for them to be receiving gifts to advance a political agenda. And make no mistake, that this Board has every intention of forwarding the Washington Policy Center's political agenda. The most important point I want you to take away from this is to remind all of you of the oath that you took to uphold the laws and the Constitution of the state of Washington. You, as a Board, do not operate as an independent entity that picks and chooses which laws you want to follow. Take this as a warning that if you continue down this path, we will welcome ACLU and a lawsuit that will definitely follow your nefarious behavior. In conclusion, I would like to remind you of the fate of the three RSD board members and how they were recalled. This is the future I see for many of you, because we will recall you. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Next up is Linda Stevenson. We can bring you the mic.
Oh, can you?
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Sure, yeah. Let's make it easy for you. Yeah, it is.
Thank you. This just, this just became a whole lot more fun. All right, thanks, Tracy. Okay, here we are. 9:00 AM on a Tuesday morning, as Jan had mentioned. Some of us are here, not anyone who works during the day, including a lot of KSD parents, not anyone that works for KSD, including the teachers or other employees. There's no KSD students here, except for Mallory, who is obviously missing school to be here. Isn't it, you guys, that love to talk about how it's all about the students, right? But you have completely and deliberately silenced their voices on this issue. Isn't it, you guys, that love to brag about the transparency of this school board? The most transparent school board ever, right? Announcing a last-minute meeting with no public comment originally on a topic that the Board has allegedly never discussed before, that's as far away from transparency as you can possibly get. Do not tell me this is just because of the legislature meeting, unless you are just completely incapable of planning ahead. And this proposed resolution has nothing to do with the strategic goals of the district and nothing to do with improving the outcomes of the KSD students. It has everything to do with you, furthering your political agenda in alignment with whoever is pulling your strings, whether it be your Moms for Liberty group, your Washington Policy Center, or whoever. It doesn't even matter. You are still trying to limit or remove learning materials from students because you find them objectionable, or controversial, or scary. And you guys seem to be scared by a lot of things. If you had allowed the KSD students to attend this meeting and voice their opinion, I think you would find that they are not as scared of as many things as you guys are. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Next up is Gail Haney.
I'm a teacher, so I can speak loudly. My name's Gail Hane. I was a teacher in Kennewick for 35 years. In addition to teaching, I worked on committees that adopted reading and language arts committees, materials. I currently serve on the IMC Committee. I read ES B 5462. The bill would require districts to adopt an inclusive, diverse curriculum, et cetera. Then I read your opposition to the bill. I did not see anything about inclusion, diversity, except the very last section, which said you wanted to foster belonging. Then I read the KSD strategic plan and found it uses many of the same words as the bill uses. KSD will recognize and value diversity. You're committed to equitable and inclusive environment. You ensure diversity and respect. How can you oppose a bill that supports so many of what you say are the goals of KSD, like providing the best education for every child and fostering belonging? It appears your main concern is passage of this bill will usurp your local control. Locally elected, subverting local school boards, encroachment on the authority of school boards are all mentioned in your resolution needs. However, what I think your real concern or fear is, is what the ES B 5462 will actually require you to do when it passes. You will have to adopt inclusive curriculum, diverse materials, along with histories, contributions, and perspectives of historically marginalized groups, and you do not want to do this. As I said, you're opposing this bill is not in the best interest of providing the best education for every child, and it defies the very goals you have stated in your strategic plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. All right, next up is Charles May.
Thank you. I guess I'm the minority speaking for what I believe is the majority, and I support the Board's decision for this resolution. State control over a local school district has no business. This should be done on a local level, decided by local people, by the people here that pay the taxes. The Kennewick School District has lost students recently. People are fleeing the district to get away from this state-mandated stuff that's going on and to allow the superintendent of public instruction to dictate to the students here and the parents here, the people that pay the taxes, to me, it's about control, and that's all it's about. And so I support the Board, and I hope you're supportive of this decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Next up is Mary Jo Wilkins.
Hi there. As stated, I'm Mary Jo Wilkins. I was a 39-year employee of the Kennewick School District as a school nurse. I saw every student in every building I worked in, most of them out of class for a variety of reasons. A lot of them for harassment, bullying, because their parents were out all night, they hadn't slept, they hadn't had breakfast. I saw the disadvantaged, I saw the diverse population. I had the, my office door was open, anyone could use my bathroom, no questions asked. And believe you me, it was used frequently, and they appreciated it. But what surprises me is you welcome our opinion, you know? You guys are here at our behest. We voted you in, so of course our opinions should be welcome. You work for us. And the fact that you want to go down this road of partisan politics when you actually wrote on a non-vote campaign on nonpartisanship is stunning to me. I watched the interviews this summer, or the people running for positions, and two of them at least said we had no problem with the district's ability to choose books for schools and that the librarians should retain their autonomy to choose those books for school, and now you are trying to pass a resolution to support the banning of books at the local level. That's just so abhorrent to me. It's incredible. So I kind of feel shame on you. You're not doing what you said you'd do, and you're pushing your political agenda in a nonpartisan position on this community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mary Jo. Next up is Lisa Papard.
Good morning. I feel that I know Mr. Galbraith and Mr. Valentine well enough to know that nothing that's said here today will change their minds. I don't know Mrs. Gladhill and Dr. Miller well enough yet, but from what I've seen, I'm going to hold on to some hope that they will take to heart what is said here. I also know Mr. Connors to be rational and thoughtful, and that he has already expressed his stance against banning books. But let's zoom out a bit, even from these particular bills. I hope that going forward, this Board will take a long, hard look at giving barely one business day's notice of a meeting and holding it in the morning. It feels underhanded and sneaky. I'm not particularly scared of a resolution, but when Micah asks what they do when they don't like a law and Dr. Pierce has to tell him we follow it, that does make me nervous. However, if you want to know what happens when you don't follow the law, look no further than your friends in Richland. As for these bills, as I understand them, they are meant to promote diversity and inclusivity. When you take a stand against these things, you starkly contradict yourself in the last paragraph of the resolution. You want to take a stand against being told what to do, all while trying to hold on to being able to tell everyone else what to do. These people rearranged their lives to come here. I rearranged my work schedule to be here, to tell you we're paying attention and will continue to stand up for the children and families of Kennewick. And I hope it speaks volumes that only one of them so far is supporting this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Next up is Erin Beasley.
Good morning. I'm Erin Beasley. I'm raising my granddaughter in the Kennewick School District. I also raised my daughter in the Kennewick School District. So I know what they're talking about, and I agree with the gentleman here. You should stay out of it. Let, let the state handle this and make their decision, and then correct yourself at that time. But I wanted to make sure you understand what you're doing. You're telling people like me, "I'm not, shouldn't be here, shouldn't have a say," and that I'd like you to know, I'm a Pasco School Board member, president of the school board, vice president of the school board, and served on the state committee. We take these things serious. We do not just pass things to be passive. And the other thing we would like to do, or you guys do, bring some color to the Board. I mean, I mean, you're sitting here, you're a passive judgment, but you have no one on the Board that can answer or counter anything you guys are doing. You have to be aggressive. 1970, in the '70s, I was called up by the Kennewick School Board and asked, "Would I come to the Kennewick School District?" Because they had no blacks, and they needed someone that would have personality that wouldn't get offended, or anything like that. You know what the first thing everybody asks? Can they touch my hair? That's what they was more curious about. That's what... That's what education can do for you. A book can do the same thing. And don't ban books about people of color, or handicap, or anything. Because that's what these kids need. They need to understand what's going on in this world. I raised four daughters, all executives of their companies. So, I mean, you should hear how they say we need the education more than... I don't know what else to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Next up, we have Virginia Tomlinson.
Good morning. President, Board Galbraith, Board members, and Superintendent Pierce. I'm Virginia Tomlinson, and I've been a resident of the Tri-Cities for over a decade. Today, I'm speaking against your proposed resolution and in support of the ESB and ESHB proposals that they oppose. Specifically, your resolution violates your own strategic goal for students, which reads, and I quote, "All students are safe, known, and valued, physically, socially, emotionally, and intellectually." There are three ways that this goal is undermined by your resolution. First, by opposing an inclusive curriculum, you prevent majority students from learning about individuals from marginalized groups who have impacted the world in which they live. For example, the actions of Rosa Parks, and for Aaron Beasley's daughters, who were success stories from the Kennewick School District. Secondly, students from marginalized groups would not have the opportunity to learn about their predecessors, who survived difficult times and can help them feel, and I quote, "safe, known, and valued." Lastly, books like All Boys Aren't Blue may not be in your library or available to students at all. I had the opportunity to hear the author of this text, George M. Johnson, speak last summer. Mr. Johnson is a black gay writer, and his book is his memoir. I understand it is also among the most banned books. Mr. Johnson said that one of the experiences that prompted him to write the book was hearing a father say, quote, "I'd rather have a dead son than a gay son," end quote. Mr. Johnson writes of the support he received from his nana, his grandmother, and his book provides support to numerous, uncountable young people who are struggling with identity and have no support from a parent. I don't have to tell you how important books are, but I do want to remind you that it's not possible for us to provide too much support for students who are LGBTQIA. It's a student's job to question and to learn, and when that questioning is about their own identity, their sexual identity, we can make resources available to support their learning. In order to achieve your stated goal of, quote, "all students are safe, known, and valued," end quote, the history and lived stories of marginalized groups must be part of our curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia. We have five left, so we'll get through these five, and then we'll proceed to the next portion of our meeting. So, next up is Regina McConkey? Sorry if I messed that up.
Good morning. My name is Regina McConaughey. I am a member of Kennewick High School, class of 1999. I am the mother of two children in the Kennewick School District. For those who may be visually impaired, the board is sitting under a sign that reads, "Successful All Students." Social science and educational research clearly states that students are more engaged in school and therefore more successful when they see themselves, their cultures, and their histories reflected in their curriculum. How can you sit here under that sign and attempt to pass a resolution that restricts the potential success by refusing to embrace diversity, inclusion, equity, and representation in your curriculum? Don't cut off your nose to spite your face. Your resolution is childish. Your main argument seems to be that you don't want to adopt best educational practices simply because the idea comes from the state and not from you? Please grow up. The other sign that you sit next to says, "College, Career, Life. The great aim of education is not knowledge but action." I can assure you, Kennewick School District students will not succeed in careers, college, or life if they are educated in a vacuum, a whitewashed vacuum, where the board attempts to filter out the reality of the world we live in. There are Kennewick School District students who are women, who are people of color, who are immigrants, who are queer, and who are disabled, and who occupy many of the other targeted identities protected, which have been read out by an earlier speaker. These students need to see themselves reflected in the curriculum. Students at Kennewick School District who are of the white, straight, male, Christian majority will surely encounter students who are different to them in career, college, and life, and it would be really great for our world if they actually knew something about these people and their histories. I am firmly against your resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Regina. Next up is Brent Kirby.
Hello, my name is Brent Kirby. I'm a parent of two students, one graduate and one sophomore in the district. I guess my first point is, local control is a valuable part of American democracy, but it must be within a framework of human rights. And so, when you propose local control that goes against human rights, then a higher authority will step in to correct that situation. In this case, the state of Washington. So, local control is not carte blanche to do whatever you want. And I expect you to follow the laws as they are written and as they are passed. I would also just like to recognize the discomfort that one can feel when faced with people different from yourselves. I have felt this discomfort with the LGBTQ people, and I have done the work to learn and grow and accept my family and accept friends for who they are. And I don't expect anything that anybody says here to change your mind or change your vote. The fact that we're having this meeting and the resolution was written speaks for itself. But if I might plant a seed for your future as a human in a society that continues to grow and learn, why is it difficult to be an LGBTQ kid in the Tri-Cities or in America? Why is it difficult to be black in Kennewick? Being black is not wrong. Being LGBTQ is not wrong. The only reason why it's hard is because we don't accept them. And so, instead of trying to change reality to fit our worldview, maybe we can change our worldview to accept reality as it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Brent. Next up is Victoria Russell. Next up would be Misty Muchlinsky. Malinski, sorry about that.
That's okay. It's silent, T-H. Since we do not teach in school, apparently. Sorry, it's Polish, it's married, I'm Harris. If I made...
I don't get offended.
Okay. I am a parent of seven students in the Richland School District at Rockhampton High School, which was recently rated 23rd in the state of Washington as one of the top high schools in the state. And it's also the most liberal. So we need to take that into account. I have faith, and I believe that you guys have no faith. You don't have faith in the teachers in your buildings. You don't have faith in the system that you, my friends, are part of, and may advance further in your careers, in your political careers. And you have no faith in the students. And you obviously have no faith in the internet. And church leaders are recognizing the evil seeping into our buildings, and you're buying into it. But I have faith you will make a better decision. I have faith that your wealth of knowledge and your college degrees in HR and in your experience will recognize kindness in your own hearts and in your own steeples and in your own buildings. I'm not here to judge you, but I'm here to ask that you do your due diligence and schedule time to meet with every school building staff. You get on their agendas for their staff meetings, and you listen to them. You listen to the teachers that are in the classroom every single day with our kids. They know our kids better than you do. And I hate to say that, but they do. You need to nurture that environment. You listen to the people and spend more time in their day. Sorry, got off track. Starting over. You can run an online survey, but the 500 parents that fill out that survey over and over and over again are the same 500 parents that are going to respond to the next survey. So that kind of just goes out the window. We need you really to go to the teachers. We need you to listen and make this decision based off their experience. And at this point, you're simply being defiant out of a narrow-minded thought process. And we all know that the most corrupt leaders know the less you know is the more you fear. And what we forget is danger lurks closest to home.
Excuse me, can I just, I had signed up, can I speak real quickly?
Yes, yes, absolutely, yeah. It was Victoria, right? Yes, Victoria Russell.
Right. I am a grandparent, and I'm sorry, I'm frustrated this morning because my two grandchildren who go to the school here were throwing up, and I had to take care of all that before I attended this meeting. But I am a taxpayer, someone who donates their time for Team Reed in this particular school district, and I subbed in the school district. Basically, I feel as though, as teachers, this is just a travesty that you are having this meeting this morning when the focus is on the students and the teachers, and they're not here to stand up for themselves. And that's basically awful. Banning books, it sounds like the days of Hitler, that you're taking over within this situation by doing that and making choices. The whole idea in this era of time is that people have choices, voices to tell you how they feel, and it is your job to listen to them. I urge you to remember that as you're working with our young people, who are our future. And you cannot forget that. And they are not going to stand by blindly and let you lead them. They will lead you. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. Our last speaker is Galen Greenwald.
Excuse me, I came in late, and you've already got the list up there.
He can, he can have my spot. No, I was gonna give someone else my spot.
Okay, so, yes, you can come in and take her time. Let's get you, what was your name, sir?
My name is Richard Ruther, R-E-U-T-H-E-R. I'm a retired history teacher. Edmund School District. Let's project something here. Let's say that this resolution passes, the bills before the legislature fail, and we turn over control locally to our schools. What will happen? Let's look at history. What happened when the Supreme Court gutted the Voting Rights Act? States in the South immediately started passing laws which denied voting rights to certain groups of people, which was what the Voting Rights Act was all about, to expand those voting rights to everyone. But as soon as they were allowed to, the local folks cut it back. That's what will happen. Kennewick was a sundown town. You have signs on Blue Bridge. If you're black, don't be here after dark. Is that where we're going? Is that what's going to happen? Progress. America has made much progress over the years. Social Security, women's voting, all sorts of progressive ideas. Conservatives don't move us forward. Conservatives like the Policy Center hold us back. If we want to go on to the next century, we have to leave this stuff behind. We have to leave banning books behind. Yeah, you know, it's rough sometimes. But parents are supposed to be doing that, not schools. Parents are supposed to be doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. All right, so we will move to our next item of business, new business, Resolution 42324, opposition to ESB 5462 and ESHB 2331. And I'll quickly ask, Mike, are you still with us?
I am, and I need to go, so I'm gonna jump in here for a second, Gail.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
So, first off, I've already missed one meeting that I scheduled six weeks ago, and I'm on track to miss another one. And while I was out of time to go do this, I missed it because I've gotta sit here and miss a meeting. So, I'm three colors of furs. So, and again, I originally planned to skip this, but the more I thought about it, the more angry I got. There is absolutely no reason to have this meeting. All of this has been discussed in any of our regular meetings. This is a waste of time, resources, as well as us. Here's my issue first. There is nothing emergent about these two bills. Neither does the material lines between last week's meeting and today. 2331 was discussed first item on January 12th. It was a public comment on January 23rd, second reading on February 4th, floor vote, and passed it on the 10th of February. We had two meetings since then, and we couldn't discuss it, this was so viral. 5462 was in students' last session, 2023. Passed out of this one. Then the House floor, they reintroduced it this year. Passed that, passed the Senate again. Again, we're gonna talk about how many meetings we've had since then. Second, both our senators voted against 5426 twice, along with senators for all of our neighboring districts. On, in the state of state, if it comes to the House, I'm assuming our legislators will vote down it as well. Now, being a minority, they're still gonna lose, but regardless. They're voting a death, doing what you, I would say, you guys believe is the will of the people. So, third, as I stated about proclamations at our last meeting, they are not worth the paper they're written on. I brought forward a proclamation to celebrate and support one of our exemplary students last week. Not because I thought it had some type of legislative weight, but because it has absolutely none. So we're here in the middle of a workday to discuss a worthless proclamation at best. So, I want to be really clear, I'm not even to discuss these two bills because this is either the time or the place, and so it's a complete disregard for our community. We've got people that I thankfully came out today to stand up and voice their opinions, but it is certainly not what I would consider a fair swath of our people. Look, this should be discussed at a regular meeting. Again, all public comment, I didn't know this was gonna be open, so I appreciate that people showed up today, but again, we shouldn't be doing this. And in the future, if we're gonna have a special meeting, it better be pretty damn special, because this is not... special, because this is not, this is a waste of my time, a waste of our time, and a waste of staff time. I am pissed, and I'm going to, I'm going to not vote on this at all because this is either the right time or the forum to do it. So, if you'll excuse me, I am going to go back to work, and so you guys have a great day.
Well, Mike's apparently not with us anymore, but thank you for your comments, Mike. Definitely could have shared that over the last three days when we asked for feedback versus essentially now. But Dr. Miller? Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Or Brittany, did you guys have any discussion points you'd like to make?
Nope. Oh, gosh. I mean, I have a lot I could talk about. I don't, but we don't, I, I don't know how much time people want to take. I mean, I have been, have spent this entire weekend since the meeting was announced on Friday, while I was out of town, actually, until Saturday evening. So I've been, since Saturday evening, all day, what, what day is it today? Today's Tuesday, all day, Sunday as much as I could, Monday, I've been reading these two bills, making sense of it, taking copious notes. I've spent somewhere around 15 hours understanding these two bills, so that I can understand the resolution and understand the statements that we are proposing to make. I have been reading the emails that have been sent in over the last 12 to 18 hours. Really appreciate everyone who has shown up today to make comments. I totally understand that it's not a convenient time. It kind of happened this way, I'm guessing because of the holiday weekend and because of how the legislature worked out, because they're taking a vote on it this evening. I just want to make it very clear that I'm not against having representation in our schools, not, oh my goodness, sorry, I'm, sorry for that. I'm down in our dental office, and apparently this phone rings. I had no idea the phone in this office rings, but it does. I'm not against having representation in our schools, not at all. If these bills, if there was, if one of these bills was simply about having inclusive instructional materials that particularly includes our LGBTQ population, I would have no problem with that. However, the trouble with these bills is there is a lot in these bills that is problematic when you consider local control. And local control was one of the pillars of my campaign. That was one of the things that I ran on and that I made very clear that was important to me when people voted for me for this position. There are actually some elements of these bills that make, that would make our policies and procedures less inclusive than what they are right now. So for example, many of you in the room today, I'm not there, but I'm just guessing from the statements that you've made and from what I can gather of you, many of you would not be able to bring a concern forward to the school district about any instructional material, materials or supplemental, supplemental materials because you are not the parent or the legal guardian of a currently enrolled KSE student. Under current policy, any community member, community member can write a complaint and can bring something forward to the Instructional Materials Committee. But once this passes into law, it can only be a parent or a legal guardian. I'm not okay with that. I would like to have it be more inclusive and have anybody in the community be able to bring a concern, as evidenced by many of you in the room today. Many of you are no longer actually parents or legal guardians currently of KSE students. I have, there's, I have a whole list of other concerns in the bills, but ultimately, the question I asked myself in making my decision on whether or not to, on my vote for this resolution, the question I asked myself was, if you were a representative or a senator being asked to vote on this bill, how, on these bills, how would you vote? And that is how I made my determination today.
Thank you. Brittany, any other discussion topics? Anyone on the phone? Micah? Anything?
I'll say something, I just real briefly. You know, when I was heard about this, I, the, the thing, I've heard a lot about book bans. That's not, never even crossed my mind. I never, I never, see, but this is the thing, see, the, I guess the issue I have is, is everybody tells me what I believe, and you, and everybody tells me what I think. But you don't actually know. You just make these assumptions like, I don't like this group of people, or I want a book banned, or I want something. None, nobody's ever asked, or had to sit down, had a cup of coffee, had a conversation, you're just making up a narrative, and it's just not, simply not true. I mean, it has, if you, if you actually could understand my heart, I actually agree, I just have a different way to get there. And, so, you know, the sentiments I've heard, and the, the way that I believe according to the comments I've heard are just simply not correct. They're just simply not correct. Those things never crossed my mind, and it's not about that for me. That's all I have to say.
All right. So, so does, where, 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 a second. Are you, are you good? Is there anything else you'd like to discuss?
Yeah, I, I would love to sit down for half an hour and, and, and discuss, but I just don't have the time here to do that, right?
Okay. Okay, just a second. Is there any other discussion amongst the board members who are online or here? And if there's no discussion, then we'll, I'll entertain a motion.
I approve to, or I'm, I moved to approve Resolution Number Four, opposition to ESB 5462 and ESHB 2331, first and second.
Is there a second?
I, I will second it.
Okay. Patty, we have a first and a second, and if there's no further discussion, we will call for the roll call vote.
Okay, due to Mr. Connors leaving the meeting, I will not call for him. So, Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Gledhill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Galbreth?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. The resolution carries, and we have no further business on our agenda, so we will adjourn at this time. Thank you.